Hey, everybody. Well, you're a minute late. Is there three of you?
Yeah.
Ready, Max? All right, let's call to order Brainerd City Council. It is Monday, August 18th, 2025, 7:30 in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Stunek, Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Here.
Chazak.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Baddel.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Chazak, second by Jaeger. Any discussion? Please have the record show that Mr. Stunek is with us. Seeing no discussion, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. We have an agenda. Next is the consent calendar. This is a notice of public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar, Jaeger.
Second.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Chazak. Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chazak.
Yes.
Oday.
Yes. Consent is approved. Moving on, we have a public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. So if there's anybody here that wishes to address the council on something not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
All right, please come forward. We could ask you to just start with your name and address.
Mayor, councilmember, staff, my name's Denny Bullock. I live at 1001 NFX Street. I'm a longtime city employee, 28 years with the city. The issue I have before you tonight is a longstanding issue I've had since I built on my house or property in 1978. The issue is stormwater discharge into my backyard, which I think the city has done it arbitrarily. And I'll try to get, I should have got on the agenda, but I'm gonna try to make this as short as I can to stay within your time limits. In July of 1974, Crowing County purchased the easement of the property where I currently live. They purchased this property for the, for the purpose of storm water retention, filtration pond for West, well, you can call it, there's three different names for it, West Laurel Street, Highland Scenic Drive, or County Road 48. Subsequently after that, and that easement, which I have a picture of here, and I don't know if it's typical, maybe Jesse can see this, the Bama First Edition to the easement, I have a plot right here. And then the dotted area is the existing easement. And on the plat, it says that that easement was to be temporary. It was to revert back to property owners when proper stormwater was.
Restored.
Installed in Southwest Brainerd. And what I don't know is, it's signed off by both the city and the county. I don't know if that's typical of a plat within the city. I think county signed off on it because of the easement. It's the only reason I can understand for doing it. But anyway, trying to move on here. In 1977, the property was purchased and developed. It's called a Bama First Edition of the city of Brainerd. And the plat is approved by the county and city. And the first, the interactions that I've had since building the house, to be able to, when I built the house, there was like four other people that were building at the same time. So I've been in talks for the last 40 years with two different county engineers and four different city engineers. First one being Ron.
Pointing at you, Kelly.
Ron.
Swinninger.
Swinninger, thank you. So I had, he come out and did a, came out and did a site inspection, and we wanted to know, they were, the lots, Terry Mulver was developing his plat at the same time. So we wanted to know which the best place to put our, our septic systems. Well, they came out and said, you know, if you all agree, put them out the back of your house. And then when future, if you give us an easement in the back of your property, we'll tie you in the city sewer. So that's the first interaction they had, and that was back in 77. In 1993, Annaback and Katy Lane, we petitioned to have the streets improved. They brought in city water, sewer, and while on the documents, it says storm sewer, but there was no storm sewer brought into our street. It has modified curbs with no storm sewer, no catch basins. So in 20, moving forward here, under the time constraints, in 2021, the Southwest Brainerd Street improvements were enacted. And I gotta jump backwards, in 1993, when we talked to Jeff Holsethther at the time, who was in, he was a city engineer, we questioned him about lifting the easement, you know, what has to be done, get the, that easement lifted on our property. And he basically said, when we do the Southwest Brainerd Street improvements, we will grab at that Cora Street, it'll be diverted, and it'll go into the college, the big catch basin at the college. Fine. 2001, the street improvements uncovered all of Southwest Brainerd. Prior to that, a couple of streets were, just had tar, they didn't have any storm sewers, no curb and gutter, and whatnot. So on September 10th, this is when the main problem started. On September 10th, I met with, oh, nope, take that back. I got 20 years of notes here.
Yeah, I know, and we don't have 20 years worth of time. So if we could get to a point where you're addressing the problem that is current right now, and then we could probably come back and put this on a future agenda.
Okay.
It seems like it's a pretty lengthy item.
Yeah, it is. I apologize for not putting it on the agenda. I'm here tonight under the urging of Jesse. He came over and did a site inspection this spring. I hadn't had a chance to talk with him, being a new.
Are you looking for, for storm sewer installment? Is that what your concern is?
My concern is I've lost thousands of dollars in value and in, in property up until the point in 2001, when they did the Southwest sewer. Instead of capping the, the strength storm sewer like Jeff Holsethther said it was gonna happen, they, they tapped into it. Prior to that time, I never had any water in my backyard. Now, I'm kind of a spokesman for three different people. The, the first three residents that easement falls under, the first two don't have a backyard, very small, doesn't really affect them, other than the loss of their property. My, when I built my house, I cleared the property all the way to property line. Up until 2001, I never had any issues with water.
Okay.
Okay, after 2001, all of Southwest Brainerd is arbitrarily being dumped in my backyard, causing damage, causing loss of value, and add insult to injury, they collect money, the city collects money for stormwater retention, or stormwater collection. So I've paid over $1,000 in stormwater collection. I don't have stormwater in the front of my house, and I'm paying $1,000 up to date, it's probably over $1,000. The city, with all the affected people that this water that's going in my backyard, has collected tens of thousands of dollars to dump water, which I feel illegally arbitrarily, in my backyard. I asked Jesse during the site inspection, and he responded with a, a text message. The main question with all the engineers that I've talked to, that I've never got an answer from, is I asked Jesse in 2001, what were the stormwater retention regulations in effect at the time that they arbitrarily tapped into the water on 48 and dumped it in my backyard without hearing, without notifying property owners, nothing. I have a letter here from, I won't read it, but it's a letter from Crowing County Engineers Office, because the easement is held by the Crowing County. There's no name of Brainerd, but Brainerd is dumping water.
Okay.
Couple of years ago, the city engineer and county engineer got together, and they, we kind of had a compromise. They came in, they had agreement on maintenance of that. In the agreement, and Jesse can verify it, 70% city's responsibility, 30% county. That tells you that the percentage of water that's going in my backyard, 70% of it is from the city. And I've never had any problem with water in my backyard prior to 2001. So what I'm here looking for today is some direction.
Yep.
How we can get this.
Sure. Can we have this coming into Safety and Public Works at a future meeting?
I have a better idea, Mr. President, I think.
Okay.
You have a question? I, I would recommend and actually make a motion that, if you allow me, to put together, I'll be happy to sit down with Mr. Bullock, at least one other member of council that isn't on Safety and Public Works, perhaps the mayor. Have Mr. Bullock bring in all his information. We sit down with the appropriate staff, go through this, and see what we can weed out, and then come back at a later date.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be more comfortable moving forward with an item, so we can just get all the information as a council. Just being as this is on public forum today for the first time, and not on the agenda, I think it'd be more appropriate to get the information to all of us. We can have it on Safety and Public Works.
Yeah, I'll make another motion to Mr. Chair, or Mr. President. I'll move that Mr. Bullock get together with staff, provide the information, so staff can collect that and coordinate it chronologically, whatever staff feels is necessary for us to make a informed decision on.
Second. Motion by Chazak, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr. Chazak.
I have talked to Mr. Bullock more than once, a number of years ago, and again here in the last few months. And I think he's got a legitimate concern, and I think we need to look at it very seriously.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. All right, if there's anybody else here that wishes to address the council during public forum, please do now. If you're online, please press star three. I'll ask one more time if anybody would like to come forward. Looks like no. We will close the public forum at 7:44. Next, we have presentations. Looks like we have a presentation, the 2026 Park Board Operating and Capital Budget. And we have a couple of park board members here. Is it just you, JD?
It is me.
All right, welcome JD. Just introduce yourself first.
I am JD Burns. I am the president of the park board. So up on the screen, you have our 2026 budget request. For 2026, we are requesting just over $2 million, $2,74,884. You'll see that's a little over a 10% increase over 2025, which we had asked for a 20%, 28% increase in '25. The majority of the increase is coming from personnel expenses, about 8% of that is coming from personnel. So supplies have gone down, services are just a very minimal increase. And then when it comes to capital, we've got $142,000 equipment expense. Equipment is essentially everything that's non-structures. So if it's not a structure, it's your, your other priorities that are just your day-to-day operations. And then long-term facilities planning, we're asking for $457,386 to continue with our capital plan that we have in motion. And you'll see this year, we are gonna spend $106,000 out of that reserves that we've had set up, setting up for future growth and projects. Those projects this year, we are planning initially are the Memorial Park Playground, which has moved up a year due to some safety concerns and some deterioration that happened faster than we expected, and the One Park, the Stone Arch Roof. So the nice thing is, is having that reserves going in that 2% a year has allowed us to move it up without having to increase the budgetary ask. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Anybody have questions? Mr. Chazak?
The Stone Arch Roof, what's the estimated cost on that, JD?
Currently estimated cost is at $6,000.
Okay. You also indicated a, oh, I'm sorry, I lost.
Main playground.
Yeah, the playground, that's, okay, you talked about growth. It was, I think, two years ago last year, perhaps, the talk of a growth was kind of, we were talking about not growing, just taking care of what we have. Specifically, the growth is associated with what then? Is it the Buffalo Hills? Is it, where do you see the growth?
Yeah, it would not be growth. We'd be replacing the playground that's already at Memorial Park. It deteriorated quicker than we expected. It was in the capital plan a few years later, I believe 2028. But due to deterioration and safety concerns, we're moving it up to replace it sooner.
Okay, so it's, you're not growing, we're just maintaining?
Correct, maintaining what we already have.
You scared me with that word, growth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chazak. Anybody else have questions? Do you have more?
I, I do not. You have everything in the packet?
Good. All right. Thanks, JD.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have council committee reports. First up, we have Safety and Public Works Committee Chair, Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We have three items on our agenda, the first of which is to approve final payment for improvement 2502, 2025 large patching project. And motion coming out of committee is to approve the final payment in the amount of $49,940, which was the original awarded amount for the patching project. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak. More to discuss?
Yeah, just a little bit more. As I said, this was the final payment. And there was actually an additional request from Anderson Brothers of additional $4,000 that both staff and SP&amp;W committee are, are not recommending that we, we do. So that's why we're recommending the original final payment amount of $49,940. The additional $4,000 that they were requesting was for pavement, that, patching that was deeper than four inches. When they encountered that, there was no communication with city staff until this final payment. And so I think, you know, as committee we discussed, and staff had discussed, had there been communication at the time when they encountered that issue? I think we'd probably have been more than happy to accommodate that. But being that there was no communication up until the, the very end, we are recommending not including that additional $4,000.
Thank you, Chairman. Any more discussion on that item? Seeing no further discussion, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion passes. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you. Our second item is discussion on sanitary sewer lining priority areas. There was a motion coming out of committee to direct staff to further develop a plan consistent with the criteria that they've developed, and put together a, a financial plan for a prioritized list of projects for three to five years. And I so move.
Second.
By Erickson, second by Chazak. More discussion?
Thank you. So this was something that was on our previous agenda. We had directed staff to put together a priority list of projects. As was discussed, they kind of came back with more of a criteria to which they could apply to projects. Criteria consisting of age of pipe, constraints, whether the sewer be under a building, other, other deteriorating conditions, versus more of a list that they would kind of tick down. And it gives the city a little bit more flexibility with them creating a criteria. So again, the discussion was that they put together a plan that incorporates more of a financial plan with that criteria.
All right, thank you, Chairman Erickson. Any more discussion on this? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you. Mr. President, our final item was the discussion of scope of work topics for the 2026 Southeast Brainerd Reconstruction Project. Motion coming out of committee was to take staff's recommendation, which was to provide planned surfacing materials of Laurel Street between 17th and 18th Street, provide removal, essentially vacation of Maple Street between 18th and 19th Street, and then finally sidewalk, and a sidewalk extension on Norwood Street from 18th to 19th Street. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak.
So with, yeah, with this motion and the discussion we had, there was those three items. Laurel Street is in the capital improvement plan to be paved. However, this item is to bump 17th and 18th Street up, and to include pavement for that one block of Laurel. It's a corner that has perennial washout in spring, and it's constantly muddy on that corner. And so that's, that's the first part of the motion. The second part is given, in that same area, there's kind of two areas of wetlands that are bisected by Maple Street, an unpaved portion of Maple Street, and that's that portion between 18th and 19th. And so staff's recommendation is to vacate Maple between 18th and 19th. And that would allow those wetlands to essentially be connected. And then the last item was the sidewalk extension. The walkable, bikeable committee had put together a plan, and it includes sidewalk on both sides of Norwood. There's a little bit of a gap, that gap being between 18th and 19th.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Dean had his hands up.
I think he's gonna ask.
I just wanted to clarify the, the vacation part. Staff's recommendation would be to remove that chunk of Maple Street, the gravel portion. Vacating would essentially remove the right-of-way. That, that's not what we're recommending right now, unless the council would like to.
It's more of a material removal?
Correct. We would be able to, down the road, rebuild the street if we want to, as long as we retain the right-of-way. But I just wanted to clarify that distinction.
The second would allow the motion to be amended, then, to not call it vacation.
Okay.
Yeah.
A friendly amendment?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a question for the engineer real quick. That, that drainage, I know that neighborhood in general has some historical significance as being a little more wet than other areas in town. Does that take care of more than just that little area where the, it's typically actual wetland, or is it just, just those two blocks that it kind of drains for?
Which part specifically are you looking at?
Well, the removal of, removal of the, is it Maple?
Gotcha. Yes, we do have a few blocks that do drain to that intersection at Maple and 18th. And then further, it drains through kind of a little curb cut on the northeast corner of that intersection. There's not like a storm sewer outfall or anything like that. It just surface drains off the roadway at that corner. So what we end up seeing is some of that gravel surface washes into the intersection, and then further into the wetland. As that builds up, it starts to retain some of that stormwater in the intersection of 18th, and Laurel can't drain in there as easily, unless we were to come almost continuously remove that material on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chazak?
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I'm not sure if our chair included the north-south sidewalk that staff was recommending, and this would certainly be something we can always amend. I, I would like to see that also included in the motion to come back with that in the proposal.
Sure. Yeah, the discussion I remember was sidewalk along the north or south, I think the south side of Norwood, between 17th, 18th, and 19th? Or is it just 19th, the additional? 18th and 19th?
Well, there was some north-south.
And then a north-south along 19th.
Correct, down to Oak. So on Norwood, from 18th to 19th, and then running south to Oak.
And 17th, right?
Clear on that, Tony? Friendly amendment again?
And then I just wanted to add one other comment on the Maple Street portion. Staff had mentioned that city owns property on that segment, and then the remaining property along that roadway is a single property owner, and they have access off of 19th Street. So there would be no, would not be landlocking anybody, essentially, just in case anyone was wondering about access.
Thank you. Any more questions? Discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson?
End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on, we have Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items that took us slightly over 14 minutes to cover downstairs. We'll try and get it quicker here. The first item is to consider the reallocation of state of affordable housing aid funds for Lakes Area Habitat for Humanity. And the motion is to approve the reallocation of $70,000 of SAHA funds for the construction of homes on South 10th and 13th Avenue Northeast, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
This is money we already awarded them, and they, but when they initially applied, it was for a house to be constructed at 426 B Street. They still plan on developing B Street, but the two they want to build first are on 10th Street and 13th. So they just want our permission to use this money on those homes.
Thank you. More discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so two homes are getting built with that money that was allocated earlier in the year.
Two single-family, single-family homes.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is a sale of a couple of vehicles. And the motion is to use Enterprise Fleet Management to facilitate the sale of our 2004 Chevy and our 2006 GMC, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Johnson?
These vehicles have been or will be replaced through the leasing program, but these are from before we did lease vehicles, so we just own them. They've been, their useful life is over, we're gonna try and sell them.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is revised public utility director job description. And the motion out of committee is to approve the revised public utility director job description as presented, and to utilize the guarantee from GMP consultants for the public utility hire, director hiring process, and to start that process now, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
There was some discussion down in committee on if we are satisfied with all of the actions we've taken with the job description and clarifying the charter, if there's still possibly some questions hanging out there that somebody might want an answer to. We decided, let's go forward with the hiring, but if somebody does still have any questions or wants any answers to anything regarding this job or position, let's still have those discussions, and bring any questions to the city administrator.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Next up is continued discussion on software purchase requests. The motion is to authorize staff to get a subscription of NeoGov Perform, and I so move. No, sorry, civic plus, next request, not NeoGov Perform, and I so move.
I'll still second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Discussion on that, Johnson?
Yeah, so we, this was on our agenda last time. We asked staff to come back with a detailed list of all the software we do subscribe to, and its utilization. And Sean did a great job putting this together. You'll notice the city spends nearly $500,000 a year on software. $215,000 is from the enterprise funds in the Water and Light Department, and the other $283,000 is just other government-scale software. None of it does the the other $283,000 is just other government-scale software. None of it does the, two, the, performs the functions, these two pieces of software they're asking for. Given what the budget is looking like right now, we decided not to go forward with both of the pieces of software, but staff did say they would prefer next request. They prioritize that piece of software first, so we are going to go forward with that.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chesak?
I guess my question's for staff. Regarding data requests, that's software specific to assisting staff with data requests, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's a phenomenal number of data requests being made, just based on what was reported for last year. And I get a lot of questions from people about data requests. And with this particular software, well, I guess my question is kind of, when it comes to responding to data requests, it all takes time. So are there, is there ever a time that staff can think of where something of importance or some day-to-day staff responsibility is ever put off to honor a data request? Does anybody have a example of that ever happening?
Mr. Chesak, I'm going to speculate, well, yes. I'm going to, I'm going to turn that question over to John Davis and/or Tony Gage. They are probably our two resident experts on data requests. So they might have some specific examples, but I suspect the answer is yes.
Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, I can share with council that does happen. Actually, quite frequently where we set aside other task processes to fulfill these, primarily when we find that the data request is made by the subject of the data, then the clock is ticking with our 10-day window. And based on the complexities that we're seeing with some of these data requests, it's when we receive them, we immediately at times put aside what we are doing and start focusing on that. A lot of times, that is maybe consultation with the city attorney, looking for some guidance based on some of the complexities of this. And, you know, that all has to be done with inside that window. So yes, it is really quite common for us to set aside other tasks to fulfill these.
May I, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. And then on, kind of on a similar note, when it comes to the Data Practice Law, it's my understanding there is no required time to respond, but I know I think, I think we maybe have a, kind of a rule of thumb to try to get data back within a 30-day period. But in that, in that instance, so what I'm wondering, is everything depends on the amount of data, the, how readily available it is, whether there's a lot of redaction of non-public or private data, and that takes a lot of time. And so when, when it comes to that, that, this software, I'm understanding, will help with that type of redaction of private and personal, non-public data? Is that what I understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fantastic. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our final item was the 2026 debt levy. Connie's put in a lot of work here and ran some calculations, and it looks like the levy, even with our new debt issuance, we're planning to issue this fall, it looks like the debt levy for 2026 will be only a slight $55,000 increase over 2025. And then she had some questions that, that we'll further talk about at a later meeting on how we should possib, the different ways we could structure this debt issuance we're issuing in the fall, that we could do state aid bonds, state aid bonds, or DGO bonds. There's all kinds of things we can do. But Connie's looking into state aid bonds and might bring something like that forward to us. But this is just informational on where we're at and what the debt levy looks like. Connie made some assumptions and some minor tweaks to it, and it's, I think it looks great. So, thanks, Connie.
Thank you. That was just a discussion?
Just discussion.
Mr. President, may I ask?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
So when it comes to our state aid, we're always in the rears on that. I don't know if that's the right term, but we're always borrowing against it constantly. And I think that was mentioned in the memo. I didn't quite understand, there was a proposal in that to get ahead of that, and I, if that could be explained, how we see an option to get ahead of that, borrowing on it all the time, and then the state will, I guess, perhaps not allow us to do that if we don't get ahead of it? Is that a fair way to put it?
Connie and maybe Jesse, I know I've talked to both of you guys about that.
Yes. So, yes, Jeff, you are correct that we usually run our state aids in the negative, which is not always bad, but with our 2025 construction projects, if we request state aid advancements for all of those projects, we will be up against or over our limit, and we may not be allowed to get reimbursed for all of our 2025 projects. Therefore, we're looking at issuing state aid bonds for the Wright, Wright Street and 10th project. What would happen then is they would take our state aid allocation to pay the principal and our maintenance funds to pay the interest, and that would help, that would help us get out of the negative for, in the future years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mike?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
If I may answer that too. It's a good thing that we are allowed to access our state aid funds ahead of time, before the inflation hits and everything gets more expensive. There's no penalty, there's no interest. We have, as a rule, advanced as much as we could because it's a good financial move with no downside. Apparently, there is a statutory limit that we can't exceed, so we don't want to get to the point where we're going past that. But I don't think we want to get to a point where we're, we're in a surplus of state aid dollars that we're just not using to feel good about ourselves. I think we always want to keep advancing.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Johnson, anything else?
That was just informational. End of report.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Next, we have number nine. This is unfinished business. First, we have a call for applicants. The Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
I absolutely thank you. The City of Brainerd has positions available on the following boards and commissions. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026. Library, one term expiring 2027. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028. The Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2025, one term expiring 2026.
Thank you. And as council president, I have one term expiring 2027 for the Planning Commission and two terms for the Water Tower Committee. Next, we have 9B. This is a final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1591 to amend Section 515-3, Allowed Uses, Appendix A Table of Uses. This is James Krambek. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So staff and Planning Commission has spent significant time reviewing the Table of Uses and recommend approval of the ordinance. Highlights of the amendment include adding and deregulating uses in the Makers and Employment, as well as the general industrial zoning districts, deregulating churches, daycares, and schools in commercial zoning districts while still maintaining them as conditional uses in residential districts, and then also allowing indoor cannabis cultivation in existing zoning districts where commercial greenhouses are allowed. So with that, staff recommends to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1591 and dispense with the actual reading. Again, must be unanimous to dispense with the actual reading. Approve Proposed Ordinance 1591. And then finally, approve the attached resolution approving a summary publication of Ordinance 1591 due to the length of the table. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krambek. Anybody have questions for staff? Looks like no. Then we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1591 and dispense with the actual reading.
So move.
Second.
By Stunek, second by Bevins. Just a reminder that this has to be unanimous unless we want to hear the entire thing. So those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, same side. Motion carries. Next, moving on, we are looking for a motion to approve Proposed Ordinance 1591.
So move.
Motion by Bevins.
Second.
Second by Stunek. Any discussion? Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. Motion carries. And finally, we are looking for a motion to approve the attached resolution approving a summary publication of Ordinance 1591.
So move.
Motion by Johnson?
Second.
Second by Bevins. Any discussion? Tony, go ahead.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That ordinance moves forward. Next, we have a consideration of the development agreement with St. Francis. I believe this is, is it James or Jesse? Jesse, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So staff is returning with a follow-up from the last council meeting. We made the revisions per the recommendation of the council and ran that through with the St. Francis staff and the approve of the, the changes. So the ultimate only changes to this agreement from the last time is the addition of the five-year limitation to remove 9th Street following the vacation. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, anybody have questions? Looks like there are no questions.
I would move to approve the development agreement with St. Francis.
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Bevins. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six, one. All right. Looking at the final item here. Next item, we have a consideration of approval of Loon Fest event application with revised conditions. And this one, Mr. Havagars, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The police officer staffing requirements have been decreased to reflect the event size and the organizers' event emergency plan. All documents have been reviewed and submitted to the city, and they are all in compliance. Staff is recommending approval of Loon Fest 25. With that, and take any questions?
Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I believe I read in their flyer, they were going to, going to sell 2,000 tickets. However, in this information we received in our packet, it says if tickets are sold beyond 2,000, there will be additional police officer staffing. Am I correct about that number of ticket sales they were proposing to sell? I thought that was like the limit. Am I wrong on that, or?
Well, they indicated that they were going to be selling 1,000, but then they would like to go up. And with the police officers document, which is attached there, if they do go over 1,500 plus, it's just all laid out that more officers would be onsite, and the event organizers would be paying for that.
So it was 1,000, not, okay.
We originally, yes, it was 1,000.
Thank you. That clears it up.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Seeing none, we are looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Chesak.
Second.
Second by Jaeger. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. We have Loon Fest. All right. Next, we have a new business, which there is none today. Moving forward quickly, staff reports. Tony, anything? Chief Davis?
Nothing yet, thank you.
Max Henin?
Oh, come on, Max.
Sean, anything?
Nope.
All right. Connie? Mike Havagars?
He has two things. This Thursday, we have a re-grand opening of J.C. Park, and it's going to be more of like a sports clinic. The YMCA will be there. Also, Brainerd Baxor Baseball Association will be there, putting on a little skill builders for the individuals that show up. And we're just encouraging everyone to be there. It's this Thursday, the 21st, at 4:00 p.m. And my last one is just the Transit Division, as you all know, is getting a new software. That program has been up and running now for, you know, several weeks now. We had a little hiccups in the very beginning, but it's really going very well, and I hope to have a further little report for you hopefully next month.
Thank you, Mr. Havagars. James Krambek?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items here. So the Planning Commission will be reviewing a potential signed ordinance to enhance design standards at this next Wednesday's meeting. Staff are recommending the commission hold a public hearing at the meeting after that, which will be in September. And then just wanted to point out from the consent calendar that the Flapjack Festival and Touch a Truck will be on September 20th. This will be the third year in a row that will be holding kind of the, both events together at the same time and near the same location. So good time to come out and get all-you-can-eat pancakes and have the kids getting trucks and honk horns and have some relay races.
Excellent. Thank you. Attorney Lego? Chris Schubert? Jesse Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Even though we're very, very busy in construction season now, we're always looking at future years too. And as we talked about on a previous item on Safety in Public Works, tomorrow is our planned informational meeting, a neighborhood meeting for the Southeast Reconstruction Project. So if any of you have time, you're welcome to come and join the residents there. Otherwise, we'll be meeting with the residents and talking about the upcoming project.
Where and when?
It'll be tomorrow night here at City Hall at 6:00.
Thank you. Eric Sharpton here. Anything tonight?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Administrator Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, it's a very busy, it's been a very busy summer. We're in budget season. Staff is doing an exceptional job. So I appreciate that. Thank you for all your hard work. And I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder. Several members of the public, I'm not going to, several members of the public got to attend a civic event, and it, second annual for me, really enjoyed it, but I'll let the, it was in honor of our local mayors, so I'll let the mayor talk about that.
All right. Next up, the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Well, I appreciate you not stepping on my toes here, but he's speaking of the Lakes Area Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and I want to thank those individuals for putting on that fantastic event once again. Bright and early, though. My gosh, do they like to get you up early and send you all the way to Grandview. So I'd like to say to them, come on this way a little bit. Come on this way a little bit for this Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. But a fantastic event. Speaker was wonderful once again, very lively chap. Spoke very loudly about a lot of things, but had a very good message, and I really appreciate it. Thank you to everyone for inviting us and for having our city administrator there with us, so. Secondly, and maybe just lastly, I want to say, H Street, open. I don't know if you've been down it or not, but Safe Routes to School is a fantastic program, and I really appreciate it, and it looks fantastic. And for somebody that has grown up in northeast Brainerd and used H Street on a regular basis, what a game changer. It's, these types of projects are so important for us to try and keep our youth healthy and safe. And I just want to say thank you to our entire staff for that entire project there. It looks great. I noticed a couple things. Trees?
Mm-hmm.
Electrical for those trees. So, I don't know if you know or not, but I'm a big Christmas guy, so if we don't get some Christmas lights on those trees, I'm going to be disappointed. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to council member reports. Let's start with Mr. Chesak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Piggybacking what Mr. Havagars talked about, the Transit Dispatching Software, I had a chance to use that, and I just emailed my request like I normally do. I got a phone call within like two minutes confirming that. Also got a response back from the dispatcher. The day before my bus was to arrive, 24 hours, got a phone call, your bus will be arriving tomorrow at whatever time, the day of the ride. It, it actually is a little bit of confusion. It doesn't tell you when the bus is on its way. It tells you when it's arrived, which is cool, because now if I forget, I can get out there within three minutes. And I have forgot before. Again, I got a return ride, same thing. It, it works really good. And people, I guess it takes a little bit of a learning curve and everything. It just seems to be going really well from what I understand, and it's, I think it's going to really enhance the service. Everything's on time from what I understand. No tardy buses. It's working good. So I'm glad to see we got it, and it's so far so good. I appreciate the staff getting that going and recommending it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, thank you. Just real quickly, we'll do our airport report. So on Monday the 11th, we had a meeting at, at the Brainerd Airport. Congressman Staber was nice enough to stop by and share a little of his time with us regarding our upcoming EAS contract, which you've probably heard about. And I can report that Congressman Staber was, was very eager to share that he is fully on, you know, on the same page as we are with what a gem we have out there for an airport, and anything that he can do or his staff can do to, to help us out there. He was more than willing to do that as well. And he also followed up with a, with a letter of support for the SkyWest following our Tuesday 12th meeting, where myself, Mr. Planzer, as well as Mrs. Ruling, were able to appear in front of the Crow Wing County Commissioners and did a brief discussion regarding our EAS contract with them. Happy to say that they also passed a unanimous vote in support of the Delta connection to, to Minneapolis-St. Paul. And so with that, we're hoping for the best. As you know, it's not in our hands, it's in the hands of DOT, but we in front of the Crow Wing County Commissioners and did a, a brief discussion regarding our EAS contract with them. Happy to say that they also passed a unanimous vote in support of the Delta connection to, to Minneapolis-St. Paul. And so with that, we're hoping for the best. As you know, it's not in our hands, it's in, in the hands of DOT, but we certainly feel that we've done everything that we can do, and I'd like to express my appreciation to those of you that have helped to write, to write letters that have been forwarded along. All of you, your work is, is much appreciated with that, and we'll hope for the best and report as soon as we know. We think it may be by the end of August, but it may be end of September, so let you know as, as soon as we can. So I should also point out that we had a part one thirty-nine inspection. This is a federal inspection of our airport. These are certainly not easy, you know, slam dunk boilerplate inspections that go on out there. I will say that we, our inspection, we passed with flying colors. We in fact received a letter of commendation, which is not an obligatory letter received by the FAA. And for that, I would like to publicly thank our ARF employees out there, Mrs. Ruling, Mr. Planser, and we also had some help from our friends at Saint Cloud, who have been very accommodating and helping us through this transition, so a big shout-out to Mrs. Loftus and Mr. Toll from Saint Cloud. So that's what's going on at the airport, as well as, we're through, still working through budget, it's been very busy out there. And just one more thing I will say is, I wasn't able to attend, I had something going on, but I did have a lot of family members who attended the, the movie in the park, and it was the raving reviews on how well that was, and that kind of parlay's into my wanting to speak just to the park board. At the tremendous amount of work and effort that has gone into this budget, it is so nice to see a budget presented that is forward-thinking, that is not reactionary, that looks like it's been thought through. I just wanna extend my appreciation to all the park board and everyone who helped to put that budget together. It's easy to read, it's understandable, and it looks like there's actually a plan that is put, being put in place. And I think you can see evidence of that when you visit our parks. They're beautiful. And absolutely no doubt about it, there's been an, an incline in the, in the quality of our parks in our area, both maintenance and otherwise, over the past few years, and I just wanna shout-out to the park board, because I know that comes with tremendous resistance. I've been there. That's all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jaeger?
Can I ask which movie?
It was Cars, I believe, right?